Are we all set?
No.
Great. It's being six thirty. We'll open the meeting. Is this mine, Joe?
Uh, it can't be.
Can I call the meeting order? Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
Second.
Second by Mr. Norton, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. First, start off by saying, welcome to the Community Beach Harbor Building, or whatever, or formerly known as Pier Forty-four. Beautiful space, great job restoring it, and I forgot how big it was. It's a very, very, very big building, so. And in the upcoming meetings, we'll be discussing, you know, some possible options for this building. But it's nice to have the meeting here. Trish, thanks for getting us out and giving us a view of the ocean. Second item, which is set to Jenna in their walk-in period. Are there any walk-ins? Seeing none, we'll move on to number three. Meet the applicants. Beautification Commission. That is Ms. Musto.
She's not here.
She's not here. And then Constable, Michael Chevray. Come on up, sir. How are you?
Good evening.
If you can just say your name and your address.
Uh, Michael Chevray, twenty-six, Myer Light Ave.
And you are here to get a license to be a constable in the town of Situate?
Yes.
Great. Just keep us a little bit of background on yourself.
Sure. I was a deputy sheriff for about ten years. Before that, I worked for Massachusetts American Academy. To go back forward, with Sheriff's Department, I worked with Civil Process and got a case for what hospital has to do and carry out the community and it is the reason why I'm here. I also worked with FEMA, so working with the communities in some kind of a crisis and dealing with people with some kinds of interesting situations is not unusual. I'm used to dealing with that. I do have a security clearance, background check, so that's really helpful. I do have a business up and running right now as a process server, so this is something that I add to that business and help me take this from my level and continue to do.
Are you a constable in any other towns?
Not right now.
So this is your first pitch of people. Any questions from the board?
Comments on the letter that we got from the attorney, the local attorney, the services?
Right. Attorney Lawrence, great. Did you have any questions? Is there a motion?
We're doing the acquaintance later on.
Oh, that's right, we're doing this, right. Good point. So what we'll do is we'll think about it for the next fourteen items and we'll vote on it. I think it's number fourteen or fifteen that actually four months will be. So you can stay for a couple hours and watch it, or you can... Actually, we're not live tonight, I know.
Right, guys, we can leave tomorrow.
You can call, if you call Sheila tomorrow at Town Hall, she'll let you know. Looks pretty good. Move on to number four. Mark, are we... Okay, so number four is going to be postponed?
Yes, till the twenty-seventh.
Till the twenty-seventh. Moving along. All right. You've done before, before the buffet. Drain layers license, article number five. Is John Cook here? John Cook? How do you want to handle this? Do you want to proceed it? Does anyone know, Mr. Cook?
Excuse me, Chairman, I believe this is a renewal.
Okay.
A renewal or a new license?
No.
It's a renewal. Actually, we know it, I mean, my...
I don't know. It was new.
Any issues, Mr. Banger, with him in the past?
Uh, he has worked with us in the past and has met all the requirements to obtain his license today. Not sure if he thought he should be here or not.
Motion, Chairman?
Yes.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the drain layer license of John Cook Jr., six one five Puzzles Street, Women's, Madison, two one eight nine.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It's unanimous. Moving on. Ms. Musto, why don't you come up? We'll go back to item number three, which is meet the applicants.
Oh, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good day.
You want a second to compose yourself, or are you ready to go?
I'll give a call.
Hey, have a seat.
Thank you.
If you can just give your name and address.
Shirley Musto, one eleven Glades Road, Situate, Madison.
And just a little bit about, we read your application, why you wanted to be in the beautification committee?
Well, I've always enjoyed being around flowers, and I did go, one of the meetings was just a scratch session, and I really enjoyed it. I do have quite a bit of knowledge from being in the flower business and owning my own flower shop for over thirty years, and I also have different degrees, florid design and pesticide and the agricultural, so I have quite a bit of knowledge.
Great. I know they are looking for hands, so. Any comments from the board?
As Chairman, if I may, I've known Shirley Shirley, served on the Conservation Commission. She served on the Commission for Disabilities, my elders. She correctly stated her background in flowers with a flower shop she owned for thirty years, so high pressure of no problem, Shirley.
As I said earlier, I think item number fifteen, we're actually awarding the deposition, so if you want to hang out for a couple hours, you can watch town government and its work, or you can call Sheila in the morning and she'll tell you.
Okay.
It's not live tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number six, which is one-day wine and malt beverages license. I saw Esther Black will walk in, so why don't we have her go first?
She's in, wait.
Oh, license.
Hi.
Hi, Esther, how are you?
Hi. This is the fifteenth year of Joshua's run, and so would like to have a big celebration afterwards, after the race, and it's at Saint Mary's Parish Center. And all the money's raised, all the proceeds go to the Jimmy Fund, so we hope you can all make it.
And the day is?
It's October twenty-second.
Great. And when does it start?
It starts, so all the races start around eight. Registration and all of that gets going, and then the end of the five mile is usually around eleven o'clock. We head inside and start.
And you're going to go into the Parish Center?
Into the Parish Center, okay.
Now, just for those thousands of people watching us, there's different levels of participation, right?
Right.
There's walkers...
Yep, there's walkers, there's a kids' fun run at eight-thirty, there's a two-mile walk and fun run, which is beautiful, all up along Second Cliff and First Cliff, and then the five mile goes around Second Cliff and out to Third Cliff, and it's beautiful. Lots of positive comments. The town's been fantastic over the years, so.
Great. Any comments from the board? This is truly one of the great weekends and great events that the town does, so I urge your participation. There's hundreds of kids that do the run, and everyone's buzzing about it all day long on the soccer field, so it's really a great event. Get out there if you can and participate, or you can probably just go to the party afterwards at eleven.
Yep, that's mine, too. Yeah.
Eleven to four. So again, it is October twenty-second, from eleven to four, at the Parish Center is when the license will be, and the event starts at eight-thirty, that way.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Esther. Motion, Mr. Murray?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to Joshua's Run for the Jimmy Fund, Saint Mary, the Nativity Parish Center on Saturday, October twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, during the hour of eleven a.m. to four p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Daniel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All vote. It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Esther. Good night. So the night has been postponed?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. Number seven is the discussion vote on a liquor license for the Backyard Burger Bar. And for those of you that weren't here, we discussed this at our last meeting, there were a couple things that had to get resolved, and here we are again. How are you?
Good.
Good. So I think what we wanted to do is give a little period of time to see if we got any feedback or any making from the neighbors and stuff, and I don't know, is anyone in the audience here to discuss establishment? Great, one second, ma'am. Anything from the board before we go to the other?
We do have a letter, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Who are the neighbors? Kathy and Greg Chason, ten Fort Place.
You know what, they're not going to be able to hear you. Can you?
Actually, no, we're outside, right here.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Yes, I'm Kathy Chason, and my husband Greg Chason. We live at ten Fort Place, longtime residents of Situate and Fort Place, and Bob has been keeping us informed about the changes and so forth, so we're really just here because we're interested and a little concerned that it is changing from a paint store to a restaurant pub, and concerned about noise and the fact there will be a liquor license, so anyway, we're here to listen and learn. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Danny, maybe you'll speak this way, but it is zoned in that area for...
It's a business.
It's a business district, so it can go in there. In terms of noise, you guys, it's going to be enclosed, there's no entertainment license at this point in time, it's just a restaurant and with a bar inside of it. Hopefully it'll be very active, and you know, with the hours of operation within...
Kitchen's closed down at nine, and on weekends, kitchen's closing at ten.
So the kitchen's closing at nine and ten, and what are the odds of operation until eleven, or?
I'd say everybody, you know, it's open by eleven o'clock at night, on weekends, ten to eleven.
Great.
Just what I think of, so the liquor license would run till eleven o'clock?
Sure, yeah.
It is...
Just wait. Just a, I'm a little confused, because Joan said something different from what Joe said. Are you asking for a license till ten o'clock during the week and eleven o'clock on the weekends, or eleven o'clock straight?
And she said the kitchen.
The kitchen's going to close at nine during the week and ten on weekends, but if I have someone walking at five-nine, I'm not going to not serve them.
Absolutely.
So I'd want to, you know, cook for them if they don't have cocktails, I'd want some milk.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm not...
Yeah, I say eleven o'clock during the week.
I'm not questioning at all your timing, I just kind of want to know what we're voting on, that's all. I want to know what the times, what the requested times are, because we don't, we don't vote on kitchen hours, we just vote on liquor license hours.
So maybe, yeah, so do you want just to clarify?
Maybe if you want to close the board, you know, turn it down, Sunday, I don't plan on being there until eleven o'clock at night, I want everybody out of there, you know, I want to be out of there by nine o'clock on Sunday.
I'm going to let you turn around for a second, and I'm going to take a, just so you can communicate with your partners without... Yes, sir.
I speak loud enough, you don't need that. I'm Jack, I'm against, I live in Stockbridge Road, and I'm here to encourage the town. I think this is fantastic, someone's looking to open a business today instead of closing. When the building's closed, we're losing revenue there. You know, the town obviously needs revenue. This is, seems to be a great fit, great place, great spot, you know, don't let more people go. That's my only encouragement, is the town needs a revenue. The town needs a, you know, they didn't fit in the town anyway, but I mean, we just, you know, they're looking to do something, and they're willing to stay in Situate, instead of going to Cohasset or Marquise or something, I just think it's a fantastic idea, and I can't see noise being a problem, you know. I mean, I've never had birdies, got fired up afterwards, so.
So, you know, so my suggestion would be...
I'd say eleven o'clock if I'm getting a par- one, and you know...
That was my suggestion was going to be, just keep it clean, eleven o'clock. That covers all your bases.
Yeah.
And I'm not, that's my gut feeling on this, but I just wanted to bring that up as a discussion for you.
Any other discussion? I'll read them, unless you want to.
No, go ahead, just before you ask, I'm just going to comment, just two weeks ago, that was my only concern, were the neighbors, and there weren't any neighbors there. It doesn't sound like Mrs. Chason is really against it, but just kind of educated, you know, maybe they're far, but the situation will be a lot like the Clippish, you know, you know, maybe right next to it.
Well, we respect the...
And you guys do, and you couldn't ask for, like, I could agree with more with what Jack said, couldn't, and we're lucky to have you guys, and you could run a, you know, fantastic operation, every other one we do, just be conscious of somebody's neighbors that's close, that's, you know, it's awesome. Talk to them.
Because as you know, as we see for the dog watch, they do come in there and, you know, that's taken into consideration every year when the license is renewed, so.
So it'll be eleven a.m.?
Eleven a.m. to eleven p.m.? Eleven to eleven?
Yes, and on Sunday, twelve.
Great. Okay. Let me just deal with one other issue before I make a question. As Joe mentioned, we do, one of the concern with this was the betterment from the sewer and the change of the establishment from a paint store to a liquor store, excuse me, a restaurant, the capacity use of the sewer system, and the bylaws in the town say that the betterment has to be assessed for the change of use. And that was discussed, a letter was written from Al Banger, the D W, to you, and that was our concern, that that wasn't going to be an issue, and we have a letter here from Mr. Berwick saying that that, not an issue, you accept the betterment fee, and you will pay it, you want it amortized over twenty years, which, Mr. Banger, I assume that's an option? Right? So that has been, you know, resolved. Right. And really, that has nothing to do with you, other than you're right, and go. Any other discussion? No? No? Yes, Mr. Murray?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant a common victuaries, all kinds of alcoholic beverages license to seventeen New Driftway Inc., doing business as Backyard Burger Bar, for a two thousand five hundred square foot first-floor dining room with one front entrance and exit, one left exit and one rear exit, for the hours of eleven a.m. to eleven p.m. Monday through Saturday, and from twelve noon to eleven p.m. on Sunday, and subject to successful inspections by the Building Department, Board of Health and Fire Department.
Second. Second by Mr. Norton. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. When's your, just for again, those thousands of people watching, when's your intended opening date?
Hopefully the last week in November, first week of the summer.
We'll see you then.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Move on to item number eight, which is a discussion vote to award a contract for sewer lateral repair. Mr. Banger.
This is a topic to award a contract for sewer lateral repair. Sewer laterals are those with, those sections of the sewer that go from these sewer main in the street through town property and into individuals' property. This is a contract that exceeds the town administrator's signing, contract signing level, and so therefore needs to come before you. We duly went out and solicited bids, received three responses. The low response is silver lining of Needham for ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. They are a responsible bidder, they in fact have been doing our work in the past, and we would recommend that you award this contract to this lowest qualifying bidder.
Yes, Sean.
Al, will this be for, like, in place, anytime we need it, or is it site-specific?
Through TV inspection work, we've determined where we have laterals that are leaking groundwater into the sewer system. And so what they're, they are assigned, they are assigned in specific locations to go in and dig up the sewer, and dig up and they get access to the lateral, then they insert a bladder and into the lateral, and they expand it and basically line the pipe from the inside out.
So is this job, is it specific, you know, streets, or is it in place the next three years when we need to have these laterals lined?
Right, it's in place for the next three years. We're awarding it, you would be awarding it on a unit cost basis, so it's how many feet they do. For purposes of the bid, we came up with a hypothetical, this many feet, this many mobilizations, what would you want? And then we compared those three bids. This one offers the lowest per unit price, and their work is well done.
Mr. Murray?
So Al, this is for the, this is for the laterals, which run from the main to the house.
Yes.
Now, when I renovated my house four years ago, I paid for those laterals, and so is the town now paying for fixing a lateral that's on private property? That's a good question. Which, by the way, just for the record, I'm fine with because, if need be, because it's saving the town money in the long run, but I just want to be clear as to what's going on here in terms of fixing...
We're moving down a path to make that determination.
Okay.
Thus far, on some of the laterals, basically, until we get into the lateral, we're not sure where the leak will be, whether the leak is on town property or on the residence property. We own the ladder up to, two feet into the homeowner's property.
Yep.
And then, as you pointed out, you connect it from there on up to your home, as everyone asked. So this is a program whereby we're identifying the contractor who'll do the work, we're still having some discussions with the town administrator about where do we, should we be doing this repairs on the home portion by reimbursement from the homeowner, partial reimbursement from the homeowner, or by a town cost?
Okay, so this is just...
And that's a discussion we'll bring to you.
Next. So this is just to identify where the leak may be, it does not...
No, this is to award, this is to get the person to begin to do the work, and the ones we already know we have to fix that are on town, that...
Okay, so this will actually fix?
We will be fixing, yeah.
On private property?
Well, we have to go onto private property many times to fix even the public property portion of it.
Yeah.
So the question you're asking is not the one that I'm prepared to address fully today, because the town administrator, and we haven't worked out the details of what we're going to suggest.
Okay.
This is simply to get this contractor on board, award this contract, and then we're doing it, and we assign them specific areas to go to.
Okay, thanks.
And until we resolve that question, we're not going to be doing it on private property.
Okay.
Al, does this, so I'm a little confused, is this for projects that have already been identified, and that's why I came up with the number, is a contract to fix a specified effort, if you don't know on that?
Okay. On contracts such as this, where you're going to do it on a per linear foot basis, all right, you need to, and where there's, to do a five-foot section, or to do a twenty-foot section, or to mobilize and come out to do any section, all of those are different piece elements of cost, okay? So, for instance, to do a five-foot section, sometimes it's just as expensive to get there, dig the hole, and do the five-foot section, as might be a ten-foot section. So what we do is we come up with a hypothetical menu of what you're going to do in this project, and then they did, some totals, so much for this, so many dollars per foot for this, so many dollars of mobilization for that, okay? That's added up, possibly the contract value.
Got you.
Okay? But when they do the work, they're going to do it on a per foot basis.
How many, based on what you've seen so far, the department, and the town, need to be fixed at this point in time, I hear you?
It's, I would say on Lighthouse Point, all of them, okay? And we are looking at an alternative there, which is maybe we don't do cast in place, maybe we don't do this repair, we actually look at wholesale replacement. We have wholesale replacement of the water lines that need necessary down there, our sewer mains are okay, but all the laterals are, soak up the rain and soak up the high tides, so. And the reason this whole area is important is because our sewer capacity, our sewer customers provide eight-hundred thousand gallons a day of raw material to us. Our capacity is twice that, but on rainy seasons, our inflow is four times that. So when it rains, or we have high groundwater, we're processing a lot of groundwater, which prevents us from further expansion to the sewer someday in the future. So we're trying, this is the cheapest way to build new sewer capacity, by eliminating leaks.
Further discussion? Great, if not, motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for, quote, cast in place, end of quote, sewer pipeline lining, where the unit price is specified in the bid response received from August thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, two. Silver Linings Holding Corporation of Needham Heights, Massachusetts, for the period of September two thousand and eleven through June two thousand and twelve, with the option to extend for an additional one or two years at the town's sole discretion.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It's unanimous.
What I'd like to say was that this is all paid for by the sewer enterprise, yes?
Okay. And you can stay right there, because number nine?
Yep.
Is yours as well? This is a discussion vote for the CMAAS contract.
Okay, thanks. As you remember, we closed the Driftway landfill, opened the transfer station, and signed a contract with a company called CMAAS in the early two thousands to haul away and dispose of what we call our blue bag or municipal solid waste. CMAAS is an EPA-approved trash-to-energy burner located in Wareham, and their main business is to supply electrical energy to the utility companies under contract. So in order to be successful doing that, they must secure a steady supply of their fuel, so they can generate the electricity that they've contracted to produce. So over the last nine months, under instructions from the town administrator, we have been negotiating with CMAAS to reduce, to look at how we could reduce the town's cost of disposing of this waste. Currently, we pay ninety-five dollars and fifty cents per ton of blue bags that are shipped under contract to CMAAS, and that contract runs through the year two thousand and eighteen, which is another, what's that, six years. Through negotiations, they've agreed to reduce our costs significantly, by nine percent. They're going to reduce the hauling and disposal cost by eight dollars and fifteen cents per ton, or nine percent, if we agree to extend our contract by five more years to the year of June two thousand and twenty-three. This change will save the transfer station members twenty-nine thousand dollars in the next twelve months, and over this twelve-year contract is worth four-hundred thousand dollars to us. So it's a good contract, but what we're going to do is make sure that we weren't locking into something that, there may be a better alternative out there. So we looked at several other alternatives, including canceling the CMAAS contract and shifting the business to the Bourne landfill. And while we could achieve some savings by doing this, it falls short of what CMAAS has to offer, for a couple reasons. One is that CMAAS's price is better, it's better than the Bourne price when you consider the cost of hauling. It would save us about four thousand dollars versus going to Bourne. Secondly, and more importantly, Bourne was unwilling to commit to a fixed, long-term contract, so really it was a one- or two-year range, we might have saved some money, but then where are we? And thirdly, if we cancel the CMAAS contract, which has another six years to run, we would be facing some legal costs, if you will, to avoid substantiated liquidated damages because we're canceling or defaulting on the contract. And fourthly, I guess, is that, consideration is that CMAAS is actually environmentally more responsible alternative for us, because CMAAS, being in the EPA-approved trash burner, trash-to-energy burner with scrubbers and all that, is a responsible place to produce energy versus putting the material into a landfill, which is an end game that hasn't ended at some point, and then we'll be stuck. So we feel really good about the CMAAS alternative, we feel even better about the fact that we can save four-hundred thousand dollars over the course of this contract, and I guess we feel pretty good about that we've got a plan that will last us a few years, and we don't have to keep having these meetings and negotiations. So at this point, I recommend that you agree to amend the CMAAS contract for the lower price and the longer term.
Just one issue. You held them on the fuel surcharge that they tried to charge you?
Yeah, we got out of that entirely, it was a math error on their part. What they're doing basically is, if the price of fuel goes up five cents, then the price of the ton would go up five cents, and we, using the math that we've discussed earlier, that's more than equitable.
And we couldn't hold it to eighty-seven, thirty-five?
No. I mean, if, the way I look at it is if fuel went up, if fuel doubled from four bucks to eight bucks, then it would add four more dollars to our ton price, which isn't, isn't going to kill us. They've already cut eight and a half, eight dollars off to start with, so, you know, doubled over time, so we're ahead, I think.
Yeah, but in the end of the contract, we'll be paying one-fourteen sixty-one per ton.
Yes, yes, it goes up, there's, based upon CPI.
Right.
But there's a limiter on the CPI, it can't go up too high.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to bring up the fact, I don't want it to be lost here, that this is another example, I think, of how the town administrator, and in this case, the DPWL, have looked at the situation and tried to figure out how it can be done cheaper. The result is, as we just heard, $400,000 cheaper over the length of the contract. And that's $400,000 that we won't be looking for seven years from now, or eight years from now. It's money that will go both to the school and to the town side of government, and just, I guess I'll say, another example of it working very, very well, and the financial results are becoming very obvious. So I thank you both, town administrator and you, and other department heads also, who have taken another program, for starting the show. Thank you.
Mr. Harris?
I just was going to add, and it's, these plans are on every street corner, like we know, so it's, we don't have a monopoly, but they certainly, the next nearest one is in Oldbury, Mass, which is, thank you, Al.
One other, quick, just a quick question now, there's a clause in the contract, if the rate goes up, what if gas goes down?
Then it's hell, there's no, if it goes up and there's a fuel surcharge and it goes down, it goes, the fuel surcharge goes down.
But if gas goes down $0.20 a gallon, does the rate go down?
No, 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 there is not, it doesn't do that. It's a, they pegged it at $4.10 a gallon for diesel fuel. Diesel fuel may, may not drop below that. I guess we didn't anticipate that until we had the contract.
So Tony, just a couple of things. The reason that we were able to renegotiate this contract is because it wasn't properly executed, it's exactly like the Constellation Energy one. So when they got the same letter from me as Constellation did, we immediately met with them, and their position was exactly the same as Constellation's, we litigate, you know, deep pocket cooperation, whatever. So what they did is they came to us and proposed an extended term for the contract in exchange for renegotiating the price. Al ran with some guidance from me after we had two meetings, but I want you to know that it wasn't just Al and I sort of doing this. We engaged an attorney who specializes in landfills, who's actually probably one of the preeminent attorneys in the Commonwealth, who does landfill leases, landfill, solid waste negotiations, and he helped us counter during the whole process, and also assured us that extending the term of the agreement out wasn't something that the town was going to get caught short with later because it was an extended term. So I just want to assure you that it was reviewed by a special counsel to move forward with this, and he's endorsed the thing that you see tonight.
I guess one more thing I feel good about with this is that that, the $29,000 that we'll be saving in the coming year equates to about $6 per transfer station member in savings. Now, I'm not advocating a rate reduction, but nonetheless, it certainly does help us hold the cost of the transfer station in line and build positive reserves so that we can afford to replace the equipment without going into the deep debt we've had to in the past, taking money from the town for that, so.
Well, Al, excuse me, Al will say that. I might not necessarily have that in my FY13 budget in terms of giving relief to taxpayers who are funding a deficit in that transfer station, and this is showing that the changes that we've made over the last three years and now this, at a minimum perhaps, can reduce the general fund appropriation for the landfill capping, that's $100,000 off the top of our shared revenues every year. So it's clearly my anticipation at this point, bearing any unforeseen circumstances, to see if we can give a little relief to our taxpayers based on renegotiating this agreement, so.
I think we can all agree that it's positive. Where, where ends up in the washroom, we'll figure that out on another day. Yes?
Finally, my question to that, Al, is the fuel surcharge, where are you basing that off of? What fuel surcharge charts are the U.S. government charts? And if the fuel goes down, you don't get any more off?
Yeah, that's, from what I understand, it's part of the contract. I don't know what the, what the matrix is that it's based on, the index of it is.
Yeah, you need to make sure that it's based on...
Okay, it is. It's based upon a very specific, it's called all diesel, that's New England.
All diesel, New England index.
Yeah, it's based on, yeah.
I get a government index every week, so I, that's why I ask, you know, that is available on, if we email.
Yeah.
You know, my only question would be just to make sure that the guy isn't budgeting what he's paying, or he don't know what he's paying or what he...
So it's based on the Massachusetts, or New England index?
Yeah, it's a New England, DDI, one, a, number two, diesel fuel retail sales by wholesale, published by the U.S. Department of Energy at the following website address.
That's right.
And it's calculated monthly.
Right. Any other discussion? Okay, if not, motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to amend the service agreement between the town and CMAS Partnership LLC of West Wareham, Massachusetts, for the hauling and disposing municipal solid waste at a reduced rate of $87.35. This Fourth Amendment shall commence on January 1, 2012, and terminate on June 30, 2023.
Second? Second. Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Again, I'd just like to comment, Al, these briefs are wonderful, gets us up to speed very quickly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? None, so it's unanimous? Thank you, Al. Number 10, street acceptance, you can stay right up there.
Actually, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Number 10 is a public hearing called for 7:45.
Oh, you're right. What time is it?
7:10, we're being so efficient, we're a tad ahead of schedule.
Well, let's, let's move on then, we'll come back to that.
Sorry, Al.
Why don't we move on to number 11? Town owned property habitat for humanity? Switch lane here? No? Any idea if he's coming?
Yeah, I thought it would be after the 7:45.
Okay, so we'll wait on that also?
Yeah.
We'll do a quick one, and then we'll come back, and you can, I want to do number 15? Or that's just an announcement?
Do 12.
Oh, we could do number 12, this is not actually the one, it's just open. So why don't we, why don't we go to number 12? While Rich gets himself settled, you can come on up, Rich.
Move that the Board of Selectmen votes to open and close the town's special meeting warrant for Tuesday, October 25, 2011.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. So we're opening it now and we're closing at the end of the meeting? Great, and obviously...
But the time that I, you know, the time that you open it and the time to close it?
It's up to you, it's not...
I'll, I'll take the motion, that is.
Second.
Second by Mr. Murray, and we will be discussing all the articles forthcoming. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, so we will go back to number 11, which is discussion of the town owned property for Habitat for Humanity. The plane's here, perfect timing. For one second. So this is, you were here with us probably three or four weeks ago?
Yep.
And we discussed a piece of property on Haveli Road between Eli and Budav, and you've discussed wanting to give the town to donate a tattoo for another house for Habitat for Humanity. I've discussed it individually with the board and discussed it with Trish, and we're trying to get our arms around it, there's a couple of sticky issues on it, and one of them has to be, or happens to be, town council and getting their opinion on whether RFPs have to go out for this type of process. And we haven't got a definitive conclusion from them yet. I know in the past we haven't done this, but we may have been doing it incorrectly in the past, and we may have to correct it moving forward. So that's one thing that we've got to find out an answer for and consider. Also, there's some other issues with the property that I'm not sure right now that the consensus of the board is to move forward with that. There's discussion about the Affordable Housing Trust and what their role should be in this, some discussion about the current property that's going on that hasn't been built yet, and then discussion just in terms of the property itself. So at this point, we can vote, vote on it, other people can speak as well, but I don't think we're ready to proceed with giving the piece of property to Habitat for Humanity. And, Mr. Murray?
Regarding number one, which I see as the most important one, is whether legally, regardless of past practice, we can just decide to do this on our own, or it needs to go, I guess, what would be the other option, either put out an RFP or something?
Yeah, put out an RFP and then anybody could be...
For me, just as part of the discussion, I very much support using the correct process, whatever that correct process may be, I support the proposal for this piece of property for the Habitat House. But, we got it, from my personal view, obviously, we have to find out how we would go about doing that, regardless of my personal view, is what the board chooses to do anyways or not. So for me, I got, we got to figure out what RFPs need and aren't. But regarding the other points, I think they're, Affordable Housing Trust, I think, could play a role, but overall, I applaud the chief for coming before us, finding a piece of property. One question I do have that people have asked me, if I may ask him, would be what the status is of the other...
Stockbridge Road?
Yeah, the other Habitat for Humanity, well, you might as well give them, there's one by the high school in town hall.
There's one that's been built and is now occupied by a town resident, a single father, four children.
Yep.
A couple of years ago, we started the process to do, two Habitat houses on the Stockbridge Road property.
Yep.
During the construction of Widows Walk, some of the land that was actually on the map indicated as that parcel had been consumed by one of the fairways for the golfers. So the property in size was not as big as it appeared on the town act. After I came to the board, the board, a week later, entertained the same parcel of land with the Affordable Housing Trust, and John Hallen presented an issue. The next meeting, the board said, well, why don't you guys work together and see if you can come up with something that would be in conjunction with each other, and we did. It would be one Habitat house on a portion of the lot, and there would be a duplex on another portion that the Affordable Housing Partnership would do. My understanding that it's close to getting started, but there are still some issues being resolved, and nothing has started yet on it, other than there is interest from Habitat in the parcel and the Housing Partnership on the other part.
All right. That's it for me at this point. I just have one question, when you say interest, what do you mean by interest?
That we went through the process, and Habitat wants to build a housing.
Oh, so it's not interest, you're actually, we've given you the land and you're going to build a house?
Yes, yeah.
Right, right. Yes, Mr. Chair?
I, when Richie first came to me with this idea, I, you know, my concern was, you know, to the neighbors, know what's happening, the last thing, what we just want to do is, you know, do something, the meeting, and people are so busy that they, you know, don't tune in, get them all, find out if things change while they're at work or at night. We've had a couple of meetings, I have not heard from anyone, but my only concern is if we can go legal, so, you know, like Rick, I kind of, whether we did it in the past or not, you know, we'll see if something's brought up.
There's some legality that has to be addressed first, that's perfectly understandable.
So that's, that's how I feel, you know, like, uh...
When I found the property, it was, had been looked at by the Housing Partnership three and a half, almost four years ago now, and they didn't choose to do anything, for whatever reason, I don't, I don't know. I went over, I looked at it, stood on the corner of the lot, and looked over at Eli, took the cross to Haveli, and saw it was probably one of the more expensive houses in the neighborhood that would be affected by this, and that their view was straight across this lot, and I went up and I rang the bell, and I introduced myself, and the couple were very gracious, and they said, well, geez, that sounds like a wonderful idea, and I was, it would be easier to help. I've been to two other neighbors in the area, and there isn't any objections that I've been aware of, so. The last time, one of the preconditions of getting the lot on Stockbridge Road was a director from the board to go and address the neighbors, and I did that, and all their issues were addressed. Just to follow up, not to be redundant, but I think the issue we have to, right off the bat, the first issue was to find out the process and what process legally we have to go by, and that is both, just to what everyone on the board has said, you know, it makes no sense to go forward with any, anything, only to find out a week from now that we're going to run it wrong, so. That, I think, is the first primary thing we have to find out, find out how we have to do it and go from there, so.
What's the timeframe on hearing back from town council?
Well, certainly not this town meeting. I mean, just if I can speak a little to the issue, when the town owns land, it just can't convey it to anyone or any group. It has to issue competitive requests for proposals, because even though your group has done wonderful work in the town, there are other nonprofits and other groups that provide affordable housing, and that needs to be competitively vetted, and then a determination made if it's awarded. So that's the problem that arises with the previous conveyances of the land for one sole group that wasn't given an opportunity to be more widely vetted. We've put that question to town council and are awaiting his feedback as to, you know, how we go about that, or we can design an RFP with very specific intent, since there's already a prior successful project in town, and that that would be the overall desire. I mean, the board and the overall goal is to create affordable housing in town, how that's manifesting itself, and who constructs it, and why. Those are the things that we don't know for sure yet.
There's, yes, sir, on the right. If you could just stand up and ask for John, if you can give him the mic, you could say something.
A couple of questions or questions I'd like to ask.
You have to say who you are and your address, please.
Tom Anderson, 405 Haveli Road. I have two or three questions. One, who would pay the veteran with the sewer connection for, and who would pay the connection charge, which is going to be within 24 to 48 months? Number two, I'm not really sure how this works, but there's probably three, four lots in that immediate area, within a few hundred yards, that go up to the neighborhood of $250 to $25,000. And I guess my question is, has the town ever considered just putting the lot for sale for a private person to purchase it? And if that would be the case, that obviously would help our fiscal issue dramatically in lots of different ways. Number three, I live across the street from that house, and I've spoken with three or four neighbors, and no one heard of this, so I understand you probably don't do diligence, but I've already been known to wear this, so I think there probably needs to be better outreach. So those are kind of my three or four questions, if you can answer those.
I'll try. Typically, I think what would happen is for the veteran and sewer connection, they would ask for the town to donate that as well. They would ask for the town to donate that as well.
So that'd be $25,000?
Probably a little less than that, but it'd be 15,000 to 20,000 probably.
It's 20 plus up to that.
Yeah, so they would ask for that. In terms of the value of the property, I don't know, but that is certainly something that we take into consideration and have discussed. It's a nice piece of property, I drove there over the weekend, I did speak to two of the neighbors, and neither of them knew about the proposal either. So that's, you know, it's an asset of the town. The town would have to decide whether they want to donate, I don't know what the, I have no idea what it's worth, $200,000, you know, just donate that to Habitat, or would we want to keep it as an asset? Now, just because someone comes before us with a deed for a piece of property doesn't mean that we have to give it to them, you know? Knowing that all of us on the record support affordable housing, you know, we have to look at all the different angles to see whether this is a piece of property that we want to pursue. Well, did that answer all your questions, or?
Yeah, I just think, you know, when I first walked in, we were talking about fiscal responsibility, and I think if some people were to save $200,000, you know, I absolutely support affordable housing. There's another program within that, it's called Helping Hands, to give money out to all of them, it's not just one family, so there's lots of ways to do it.
I think what, what Rich may say, or other people involved in this, is fiscal responsibility and affordable housing don't always have direct correlation, you know? In order to get affordable housing, the town has to, has to give to it, and when you give, it's, you know, whether it's a piece of property for 50,000, or 200,000, or 300,000, you know... or 300,000, you know, it's a donation from the town to support an interest. Again...
In survey of my neighbors, if you have a choice between $200,000 to hire teachers or to donate, at this time, the donation is not an option. Maybe enough time.
Yes, sir.
I'm Barry Gifford, Brown Avenue in Central, and I'm a volunteer and warden in some sort of Habitat. And we, one of our biggest challenges is finding affordable land, because, as you know, many of these towns do not have, you know, affordable housing for people who live and work in that town. And Rich contacted somebody at some sort of Habitat, and we started talking about this. It's a piece of property that doesn't need a lot of infrastructure to make it affordable. So we identified that as really a plus for that piece of property. And so we, we're looking, and we cannot find a lot of land that is really affordable from the standpoint of not having a lot of infrastructure costs associated with it. So I guess I would say we encourage you to do what you can to, on this piece of property, and also on Stockbridge Road. It does have some infrastructure problems. To get these projects moving so that we can, we can build homes in some sort of that are affordable.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, if I could just address the other gentleman's point there. Neighborhood outreach, you know, absolutely, that's part of one of the reasons that we have these special meetings televised, and the press is here, and all that sort of stuff to help get the word out. Because whether it is something that the entire neighborhood wants, or the entire neighborhood doesn't want, or it's 50/50, or what have you, the neighborhood needs to be informed, and we're committed as a community to making sure things do get publicized. So I agree with you on that. Just pointing out my own personal views about the put it on the market model. You know, there are a lot of things in town, in fact, I would argue that that's part of the role of town government, is to, you know, make these tough choices. Is it all about revenue only, or is it, you know, where do we, where do we sacrifice some on the finances in the name of making our town more like the town that we want it to be? And I'm sure everybody here can come up with their own examples, but as you may know, I'm involved a lot with the waterways and the activities going on here in the harbor. And there's two immediate things that come to mind where we sacrifice finances in the name of creating the town and creating opportunities for people that might not be able to otherwise afford it. One is at the public marina, where I personally used to keep my boat, but now I'm on a mooring, so I can say this with some clarity. But we have a public marina, that the rates are significantly lower than what the private marinas charge. And the reason for that is so people that don't have the money to afford the big boats and the high expenses can in fact enjoy the harbor, come do business in the harbor without being charged an arm and a leg, or two legs, for the big boats. And the other thing is we look at the commercial fish pier. It would be very easy for this town to put commercial fishing out of, out of business if we just went purely on a revenue model by analogy. No one wants to do that. We could take that town pier and tear it down, or, or charge exorbitant rates on that, and bring in cruise boats, and bring in expensive things like that too, which would certainly be more fiscally responsible, but in my opinion, it wouldn't contribute to create the town that I think we all want to live in. Or maybe I'm in a minority on this. So, I, I respect your point, and I agree with your point. I understand the numbers of your point. There's, there's no denying the fact that if it goes, if we could sell it for 250 or 300, or even I'll grant you 400 when the market turns around, or whatever, that that would be money that would be, you know, not available to us if we were to put it out for market. So, I just happen to disagree with you. I, I understand your point completely, but there's a lot, let me finish just for a sec.
One second.
Let me finish for a sec. But I just think there's a lot of examples where we do this, and on my part, you know, I like the idea of Habitat for Humanity, maybe Affordable Housing Trust or something else that we don't know about, but on my part, I'm committed in certain cases, and this is one of them, to, to do, to go the affordable route on this. Now, if it were, and I'm just making an absurd number up to make my point, there's obviously a crossover point, let's say 10 million, or 5 million, or 1 million, where it does become fiscally irresponsible. And I think at the level that we're talking here, my personal view is this is the way I want it to go.
I guess my only point was that I sat in that line to get slipped for eight years.
Yeah.
I think I was the only person to sit with the whole state sitting in that line. So I understand what you're saying about the town.
Yeah, yeah.
And the whole state is benefitting from that, it's not just the town.
Sure.
So, and I would argue the same thing with this, the whole county around the state.
Yeah, no, it's a fair point.
Just to reiterate, we could talk all night long, but the bottom line is we have to find out, have some opinion from town council on which way to go. And if I may, but to the gentleman from Habitat, you mentioned that you asked the board to, to move along the Stockbridge Road project, and I don't quite understand, is that, there's nothing the town can do?
Well, the...
There's no hangup on that one, if I may.
The way it stands, that's, you know, we are waiting for the town to tell us what the infrastructure costs are to put power and sewer and other utilities up to the house.
Oh, so you have a request into the town?
The town is, my understanding is John Howland has had to go out and get competitive bids for the infrastructure. Understanding there's three houses left, there's a duplex and the Habitat. And we were going to share in those costs if they weren't too much. Okay? Our independent estimate was that it would make it economically, I don't want to say unviable, but it would create a situation where we couldn't really build affordable.
I don't think, I don't think, and I can't, I stand corrected if I'm wrong, that we have seen any numbers or any requests. Al?
Oh, sorry, no, no. I don't think we as a town...
Well, we've been told in a meeting by John Howland, he had to wait for, he had to issue a request for proposals to get the infrastructure for the three houses.
Maybe he's, maybe he's waiting for the replies. But we haven't seen anything else.
So, just a quick question. So what you're saying is the land that we gave you, you may not build on because it may be too expensive to get?
Yeah, you have to give it to us.
To Stockbridge Road?
Yeah. There is, it belongs to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Oh, right. But, but for all intensive purposes, you have one of the lots?
Yes, they asked us to build a housing. But we're waiting for the bids on the infrastructure. We were just going to, I, I, we expected at the time that we would just take part of the infrastructure cost. I mean, John came back to us sometime this summer, I can't remember exactly what he said, he'd been told by, I don't know whether the town council or the town administrator, he needed competitive bids for the infrastructure.
Okay. Could we get some clarification on that from town hall at some point on this? Because everybody here is trying to move this forward, but I just get the sense that there's...
It's, it's been a long time coming.
Talking about each other, and just some, something definitive on this? Because this is something that might hold up another project, or might not, or it's something that we've all went out on and voted and supported at town meeting, and I'd just like to get this clarified and move forward one way or the other. Please.
I suspect the infrastructure question is, you have to pay, someone has to pay to hook up, say sewer from the house to the street, or water from the street to the house. And because you're using public monies to do that work, or you're using public monies to build a house, you have to go out and do competitive bidding to find someone who'll build the house competitively, or a drain layer who will install the sewer competitively, or, I, I think that's what, that is, I don't know why there's a big issue with it, but...
How, how do we handle...
I'll tell you how. There is a meeting on this Thursday, I'll find out from the Affordable Housing Trust. But the issue is, and I didn't want to get into it because, you know, we're here on a property on Habitat, we're not on Stockbridge, so I think we're way far fetched, but I can tell you right now, the issue is that it's more than just the water and the sewer, it's also the roadway. And you're correct, I forget your name in the back. It's my understanding that Habitat for Humanity is thinking about backing out because of the cost for that infrastructure, but I can assure the town, I can assure the audience that the Affordable Housing Trust will have three residences built there, town residents, for people who qualify. And whether Habitat for Humanity is going to be a partner with the Affordable Housing Trust, doesn't matter, this town will have three nice homes there. So, next meeting or the next town hall, I'll be happy to address all these issues and I'll report back to you.
So we will move on. So at this point in time, we're not beyond a warrant for the special town meeting, and we will get an opinion from town council for any future projects and how we have to proceed with it. Okay.
Can I just interject for a second? Does everybody understand why? Because it's town property, once you're going to sell it, it has to go to public bidding, which means that both everybody has to be able to bid on it. So, this can't be done by just deeding it over to Habitat for Humanity. It has to be done properly through legal means, and that's the reason why town council has to be involved. I feel bad, Mr. Lang just walked out of this meeting, because frankly, that's the issue. Now, the property can be deeded over to the Affordable Housing Trust, which is a town trust with the town's interest for affordable housing, and then think about the future of deeding it over to Habitat for Humanity, providing it's cost effective. Maybe that's the rule that we're going to have to do, but we can't just jump in and then assume that it's going to work its way out. We've got to make sure it's done appropriately and properly, so that's the real issue that we, you know, folks.
Thanks, John. Do you want to...
Guys, back.
Yes.
Just one quick question, and...
Just say your name and address.
Jack, I guess, I use Stockbridge Road. Is the same legal issue with the Stockbridge Road property, is that?
No.
No, because, because the, the original project that was done on 3A was done many years ago. Then the one we just did at the last town meeting conveyed all the parcels to the Affordable Housing Trust with the understanding that one would be conveyed to Habitat for Humanity. As the Affordable Housing Trust is a public department, that's why we don't have to do a formal thing. This is a separate standalone property now that Habitat wants to come for us. The conveyance that was done many years ago, in my view, was not done properly, so we want to make sure we have all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, so that it's properly bid and vetted, and we know what we're getting into once we issue the RFP.
All right, just so I understand, the homework that we need to have, we need to hear back from town council about the process for Halloway Road one, and for Stockbridge Road, we need to circle back and find out what's going on with the infrastructure, all this other stuff. Roads, hookups, whatever.
John, I'll be back in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And it won't just be for Halloway Road, it'll be for all future...
No, I understand that, yeah, but just the ones of course, yeah. Thank you.
And then, still, we have to decide whether we want to actually give that piece of property or not, based on 10 other factors.
Right, because you, they've warned, assigned outside the Affordable Housing Trust would issue an RFP for a specific piece of land or land.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay. So you can start with the warrant, we can't, we get up to the street acceptance in 10 minutes. Or we could do the, hold on one here. Why don't we jump right into the warrant and try and get a couple of those done? So we'll do item number 13, and we'll start with number one. So these are the, this is the warrant for the special town meeting. So on October 24th, we are having a special town meeting at the high school to go over potentially all of these articles that we'll discuss tonight. I think there's 20...
October 25th?
25th, so it's 25th. There is almost 20, or a little bit over 20 articles. And what we'll be doing is discussing them tonight to understand them, debate them, and decide whether or not we want to put them on the warrant. And why don't we start with number one?
So Tony, if I can interject, the first part of that agenda is a financial overview, so you folks have some context for the warrant articles that you're looking at, if we could do that first at your pleasure.
That'd be great. So we have...
Yeah, Mary included a bunch of mine, actually, important. I guess, yeah.
So Tricia, do you want to give us a quick overview of...
Yeah, I just want to give you a, a quick thing. I know traditionally, sometimes the town had a special town meeting in the fall, sometimes it, it didn't. Really, the purpose of a special town meeting is to sort of clean up business that's developed after the close of the prior fiscal year, and some things that you know now in the fall that you didn't know in April, when you approved a town meeting budget, which you essentially started even a year before that. So that's really, in the purest sense, why you have a special town meeting. So the articles that you have before you are really to clarify additional information since the annual town meeting, finish some FY11 unpaid bills, things like that, and some other things that really cannot wait until the annual town meeting in April before. Since the budget is set then, where are the funds coming from for those types of appropriations that we need at this special town meeting? So what I wanted to do, and Tony and Mary and I have talked over the past several days, is to talk a little bit about the town's financial situation right now, to give a little bit of an update, because we've had the end of a fiscal year, we're about to set a tax rate in November. And, and what has happened is a number of positive, I think, results as far as the financial management of the town, with the financial forecasting and the projections that we make for town meeting. We did have an uptake in local receipts for the period ending June 30th, and we also have a fairly significant increase in free cash that's been certified for the year. So those will be the basis of your discussions when you talk about the warrant, you get into the motions probably at the next meeting, as to whether or not there's additional raise and appropriate capacity taxation for funding some of these items you're going to discuss about. I have some very definitive recommendations to you about how I, I think these budget items should be funded, and also the free cash, and how that should be handled for capital, operating, reserves, stabilization, or what. So, not to take up a lot of time, I had Mary itemize a listing of all the departmental turnbacks that are generating our free cash. You'll see from the chart that I just gave you, it's the highest it's been in the 11 years that that went back. It's $1.5 million from a deficit of $192,000 in four years ago. But we also, you know, have needs to replenish our stabilization fund from the December storm, and build up our reserves for capital, and also have a reserve for FY13. A lot of the money, and I really want to be clear for folks that are watching and listening, is over a half a million dollars of that free cash is a one-time revenue source. So that means it was, came to us either through a foreclosure, or an increase in estimated receipts, or a one-time surplus that we do not anticipate to get in FY12 or FY13. So I just really want to be clear of that. I think the board knows, I feel very strongly, that free cash should not be used for anything other than non-recurring expenses. They should not be used for operating so that our budget is always structurally balanced. And what that means is that the revenues we raise meet the expenditures we need, and we're not using or subsidizing other revenues that won't be recurring. But these are all questions that you can have in your mind tonight as you review the 203 warrant articles, and then have a greater sense of when you vote the warrant on the 27th. You have then additional time, because it's the actual motion that goes to town meeting that will determine the source of funds for the ultimate articles. But I will provide recommendations to you for next week of how I think those should play out. But I, just for purposes of your discussion tonight, you don't need to make those decisions. What you have in terms of the bracket on material and the warrant, Mary's already made some monetary changes to, because my math is sometimes off, so some of the numbers will change a little bit, but it's nothing significant in terms of your general view that changes one way or the other, the stuff before you. So I'll be quiet, and again, you have a lot of paper in front of you, but really, it's a great amount of detail to show you where the funds have been generated for, where the local receipts inside and outside the town, our departmental turnbacks. And Mary on the back page has itemized the one-time sources of revenue that we've identified that we will not or do not anticipate to have in FY13, so.
I want to thank Mary for getting this together on short notice. I saw her last night, and she pulled it together pretty quickly. And, and really thank Tricia and all the department heads for running the, the town effectively and, and very financially responsible. This is the highest... This is the highest number of free cash we've had in 11 years, and the only reason we have it is because we're running our town correctly. We know that we have deficits in some of the reserves that we should have more on, that we'll discuss where this money goes in the future. But, this is frankly, a very good discussion to have because the opposite would be devastating. So, in terms of our forecasting and in terms of the way we ran the town in the last year, we've done a good job and we've gotten lucky with some one-time events that have given us revenue that exceeded our projections. So, you know, kudos really goes out to the town administrator and all of her staff for making this possible because very rarely in the last 10 years did we have this problem. So, thank you for that. So, I guess the general sense is going into the articles that we talked about that will have a financial impact on the town is that we do have free cash available, that we do have excess tax and capacity in fiscal year 2012, and we do have, I hate to say it because I would never want to suggest it, but we do have $2 million in the stabilization fund, which is extremely underfunded. I think the town administrator is thinking very hard. So, as we look at these, we have a sense of what funds are now. Did you have...
I have a question.
Yes.
So, what are we doing tonight? Are we, because I guess there's a meeting next week and I've heard people say, well, we're going to be voting the warrant next week. So, are we voting warrant articles type that have no financial numbers associated with them so it doesn't matter whether we vote them now or next week, just to get them out of the way, or are we just discussing these, bringing them up for discuss and we're going to vote everything next week?
Right, because there's a couple, I frankly, don't know if you want on or not.
So, we'll discuss them all, and if we all agree and the numbers are right, then we'll just vote.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then, next week's meeting, you know, we had to set up a meeting next week to go over the rest of this stuff because we probably won't decide on all this tonight to wrap up the warrant, and that was a, not a surprise meeting, but one that we hadn't planned on.
Is that the only thing on the agenda next week, roughly, plus or minus?
Yes, I guess there's a few others that we're going to tag on, but that's the primary purpose, so it has to go to the newspaper the next day.
Is that going to be here or at town hall?
It can be here if you like, but it can be at town hall mostly. Well, I'll talk about it in my report, so it can be, it'll probably be at town hall.
Okay, so why don't we start?
Why don't we start the...
Why don't we start the street acceptance?
Street acceptance, 7:45.
Great. So, it being 7:45, we'll now go to item number 10. Street acceptance. Al Banger?
You. Gentlemen, this is a public meeting on three streets that are being proposed for acceptance as public ways. The property owners along each street have been informed by certified mail at least seven days prior to, prior to the board's intention to hold the hearing. Additionally, the meeting is posted in a public place as required by statute. The three streets being considered are Persimmon Drive and Hickory Lane, which are located off of Tilden in the Wamputuck School area, and Beechtree Farm Road, which is off First Parish just south of Lawson Park, Lawson County. A moment of background and I'll turn the floor over to you. On each of these streets, 75% of the property owners petitioned to have their street accepted and agreed to have the town make the specified improvements funded by a betterment assessed against their properties. Now, for perspective, on the Persimmon Drive and Hickory Lane area, the cost to bring those streets into compliance is $105,000 divided by 19 residents, bringing in the betterment potentially as high as $5,500 per family, per residence. Beechtree Farm Road, we're looking at nearly $59,000 worth of improvements needed to bring the street into compliance divided by the 10 residents, bring this property to around $5,800 per property in terms of a betterment. Mass General Law, Chapter 80, Section 1, gives you, the board of selectmen, the authority to assess the betterments in this manner. Have your layouts of the streets, if you'd like to see those.
I think we actually saw them.
You did.
I mean, if you go through the process, this is coming, we saw this about two meetings ago and then it went to the planning board for their approval, and now it's back to us to put it on the warrant and for the final stamp of the betterment.
Correct.
Just FYI, as being chair of the board of selectmen, you also get to be chair of the street acceptance committee. You see Mark Sanders back there, the vice chair, he is on the committee as well and so is Bill Limbacher. So, we've seen these streets a number of times and I see the residents in the audience as we've seen them for the last several months. So, this is really more of a formality. Are there any questions from the board in terms of any of these streets?
I'd just be curious, see if the residents had anything to say. That's all, I mean, it's, at first, it sounded like a real, you know, it's a great thing, they're finally going to get their streets accepted, they get plowed, there isn't an issue being private way. But, I don't want to get into a big discussion. These are late model streets and I can understand what's going on along that street, but these late model developments, people buy a home, they shouldn't have to, have to pay a betterment to get it accepted as a public way. This won't continue to happen, right, Al? I'm sure it won't.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying?
The developer obviously fell short of doing something.
Well, let me, one second. This, that's exactly what will happen, you know, they bought their houses knowing that it was a private way, and if they want it to become a public way, it's got to come up to the town standards.
I see.
And all, yeah, all these people have been here, they've all, you know, at least 75, in most cases, more than 75% of the people have agreed to the betterment to improve their streets because they want it improved. It's flooding or they don't have a...
All of that.
So, I would say some of the newer developments being built, the one on Elm Street, the builder is building it with an eye towards it, to build a public street. I think there was a time in the past where it was the town's position that we don't want to have these developments become public streets. And so, a lot of, I don't know who favored that, the builders or the whatever, but in the end, many streets were built not properly wide enough with radiuses. It wasn't necessarily the right inspections done to inspect that, that the curbs, the streets paved up to the curb, properly closed, you know, and so on and so forth. So, I think in today's world, people now are incented to move to become public ways. In the past, they weren't so incented and so...
I didn't realize that.
The only thing I'd add before I pass it over to John is of all the meetings that we went to for all of these three areas, not one person, one neighbor came in with a negative comment at all.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, that's great.
John. Yeah, you know, having done this last year and a number of streets that were accepted, just so people understand that generally, a lot of the people who do these subdivisions or the contractors or developers, they do so and they come in subdivision, they go to the planning board and they try to do a real quick protocol and they give or take certain things and certain expectations. They don't necessarily have to live up to the full standard for an acceptance of a town road, so a lot of these roads were considered private ways. People who bought them into these subdivisions didn't realize that, and they're the ones who are impacted by it now. The person who should have paid for it should have been the developers. And, you know, again, I'm not parsing blame here on anybody, certainly not the town because they negotiated with the planning board and made those determinations. So, the people who are paying for it now have to go back because they didn't realize that. As far as the inspections that you mentioned now, there's absolutely no excuse if, if the town failed to inspect and ensure that based on the conditions put forward by the planning board for any type of subdivision, they weren't met, that's the town's stake. The town needs to make sure they do a better job. And I know they have been, but I don't want to ask if they did. At least some of these subdivisions go back 10 years in time, so these people are fixing those problems. There's a little, again, negotiation going on because you're right, this, the dimensions of the roadway or the curves of the roadway, the town's negotiating with those people saying, we're not going to mandate that you have to fix it pursuant to, you know, a public road, like what we'll do is we'll make it work for you and make it work for us so that you become a part of our road system. So, I think the mechanism both the DPW is putting in play with the street acceptance committee is excellent. I'm glad people are getting involved and, you know, these numbers, while they are certainly large numbers for a family or a household to have to pay, it certainly beats a number like 20,000 or 30,000 like some of these other, some streets that have come in that can save two costs per day. So, I commend you, I commend the people for doing it. I know it's not fair, I know we had to explain that a number of times last year, but obviously to the developers who were able to kind of get away without having to pay, and that's where they got their profit. So, it's kind of really the story, Sean, of what went on in the past.
I can see, yes, sir. If you can stand up and say your name and address.
Yeah, John, Hickory Lane. Actually, John just stated what I was going to say. If John's willing, when we purchased that property, we didn't really know that it was a public way. So, it was never stated to us when we discovered it and so, you know, for our community, we're agreed to do whatever pays. But, I just want to be real clear that it was never conveyed to us, it got away when we purchased that.
We're finding a lot of that as we go through this. Yes, Anne.
Anne Burbine, Pennsylvan Crest Road, the Pennsylvan Crest Plan Board. I do take a little bit of exception. I was involved with these trees, that's the one from last night.
Yeah, John.
I came on after Christian State. They were bonds that were put aside with the developers. People bought these houses and would pay. And the planning board did its due diligence in terms of what these developers had to do in terms of their performance. One of the issues that we bring into, unfortunately, and I wish fortunately it would change, there was no enforcement. There was no enforcement. If a road did not come up to, and we used to do a go-around every single year with Paul Scott, we went to Blackman Lane, we went to Christian State, we went to Laurelwood, we went to all these different developments, and there was a laundry list of what needed to be done. Where was, where is the jury? Where is the bond that these developers had put forward, their letters of jury? I know that with Wamputuck Hill, there was a million, at least a million. I feel very badly for these people that they got to do this.
Yeah, I don't mean to cut you off, but I really don't want to go backwards and, you know, I think nowadays, there's bonds there and unfortunately, it's really out of...
They were bond standard.
Out of the town's control. I mean, it's not the town's responsibility, although we are helping in some, in any instance here. So, any other comments?
Unless there's comments from the residents, I'll make a motion.
Do you need a separate motion for each road as was suggested or?
I think you do. Do you have to hold the first one for Persimmon Drive?
Move the board of selectmen vote to order the layout of Persimmon Drive as a public way and way, said way bounded and described in accordance with the description and plan to be filed with the office of the town clerk at least 10 days prior to the special town meeting.
Second. Second, Mr. Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Next one.
Move the board of selectmen vote to order a layout of Hickory Lane as a public way, said way bounded and described in accordance with the description and plan to be filed with the office of the town clerk at least 10 days prior to the special town meeting.
Second. Second, Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? It's unanimous. And lastly, John.
Move the board of selectmen...
Go, John.
Move the board of selectmen vote to order a layout of each tree farm road as a public way, said way bounded and described in accordance with the description and plan to be filed with the office of the town clerk at least 10 days prior to the special town meeting.
Second. Second, Mr. Danny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, it's unanimous. Thank you, Al, and thank you residents for being patient through this process. Okay, now we will get to item number 13. The warrant. Is anyone from the Knights here? No, they're here, I do that first, so there we go. No one from the Knights? Actually, why don't we just do number 15 real quick. Number 15 is an announcement of the more of the financial... The Tootsie Roll Drive? Who's favorite clerk?
Mr. Barry.
Righty. Looking forward to this one.
I'm sure Barry is there.
Whereas, the board of selectmen would like to recognize a very worthy fundraising event sponsored by the local situate council, the Knights of Columbus, and whereas, this campaign will be conducted from Friday, October 14th to Sunday, October 16th, 2011 via their well-known Tootsie Roll Drive, which will benefit the physically challenged and learning disabled in various communities throughout our Commonwealth. Now therefore, be it resolved that the entire town of Situate and the board of selectmen thank the Knights of Columbus for their continued dedication to charitable organizations and hereby proclaim October 14th, 15th, and 16th, 2011 as Knights of Columbus Day for the physically challenged and learning disabled and urge all the citizens of Situate to participate in this important event. Signed by the town of Situate, the board of selectmen, Anthony Vignani, chairman, Sean Harris, John Dannae, Richard Murray, and Joseph Moore. Thank you. Now, we'll get to the good stuff. Number 13, we'll start with the first article, and this is one of the numbers that I think you're referring to that changed. So, this is, I guess the best we'll do it with one, one at a time, and then if Tricia or Mary can answer any questions, if we feel comfortable voting for it, and Tricia, if you think it's in its final format, then we can just vote it. If not, then we can postpone it until next week. Does that make sense?
Yeah, let's, Mary. I think so, but in terms of some of the number ones, I would like to double check with her.
Sure. Anything you want, we can postpone. So, this first article is for prior unpaid bills for fiscal year 2011 in the amount of $3,613. There's $1,000 for a greater, $2,160 for stump grinding and a medical, a medical bill in the fire department for $453.
That one's okay.
Any questions on that?
Motion, keep going. Motion, keep going.
Second. Second, Mr. Murray. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions from the audience? Number two. This is to see if the town will vote to transfer from bill funds treasury the sum of $400,000 for a greater or lesser sum from the purpose of replenishing the stabilization fund from the storm-related costs of December 2010 in the amount of $168,000 and further appropriated $232,000 for additional reserves. So, essentially, we spent about $168,000 from the stabilization fund for the repair work of the storm, and we're looking to replenish that and put another $200,000 into the stabilization fund. And this is one, why don't we hold this because we haven't figured out where, what source of revenue we're going to put this from. I guess the discussion would be, in my, in my opinion, the 168 is a no-brainer and then the 232, as we digest our financial picture, we can decide how much additional we want to put in the stabilization fund.
Talk around next week.
Move to hold.
Move to hold. No other questions for Trish? Okay. Number three. We want to amend the budget. Do you want me to just read the article? Is that the best way to do it?
Yes, probably. Except, is the explanation for three right?
Yeah, the explanation for three, yeah, is...
Right. Well, essentially, this is to amend the warrant by $85,000 to, for the school department because of a difference in the cost for the Wamputuck repairs in terms of what we had initially allocated and where those funds were coming from and where they are now. So, it needs an additional $85,000 to do that repair work that wasn't in the budget.
That's article four.
Oops, I'm sorry.
So, article three, and I'll, I'll try and then Mary can jump in. When the school budget was approved, there was an anticipated revenue for legacy funds from MSBA reimbursement, and that full amount didn't come in. We are going to get it, but we're going to get it at the back end instead of having them available. So, in a lot of ways, it's just a housekeeping item to make sure the school budget is the right number with the available revenues they have. And then, when that's an actual receivable that comes in after Wamputuck's been cleared and audited, you know, that money will come into the town. So, it's really just, it's a lot of words to just a housekeeping thing. It doesn't materially affect...
Are these numbers finalized?
But, but, the article is expected and how it's worded and as to whether you're going to, it's a net of $81,000 that we, that we're off, and it's either reduce the school budget by that 81 or, or raise it from tax taxation is the difference between them.
Would you suggest that we hold it or vote it?
No, I would hold it. I think the better course of action is to do it as a raise and appropriate, but, I mean, if we want to decide where all these pockets of money are going to distribute next week, then we can do that. I would not, I'm not suggesting, and that's why I characterized it in my mind as a housekeeping item, to just capture it under the raise and appropriate and not reduce the school budget.
Right, and that's what your explanation was off on.
Okay, so, hold. As I understand, it's a timing difference in terms of when we're going to get money from the state. We can either reduce the school's budget by $81,000 or fund it from one other sources.
And then, it'll come in the general fund out.
And then, when we get that money back, it'll just refund that.
Yeah.
I would, and discuss... I would, in the discussion, I would vote not to reduce the school budget and to fund it and let it replenish itself.
Ever even appropriate.
Are we fine with that?
Yep.
Sounds good. Okay. Great, so we just have to figure out what pocket of money we're going to take it from next week.
Well, actually, you can leave it as written, and it will just come from taxation.
Oh, we'll figure that out. The next one is the one that I had discussed before, which was the eighty-five thousand dollar shortfall in the Wampe Tech project due to the fact of the, the source of revenue was different than what we expected to be there, so we need to appropriate eighty-five thousand dollars to finish that project. Again, we don't know what pocket we're going to take it from.
The board doesn't. I can't recommend, but we can say that. I mean, I think this, again, should be a raise and appropriate, because we have additional capacity.
Now, when she says raise and appropriate, that's coming from the fiscal year two thousand and twelve money that we have exceeded our projections.
Right, we have additional capacity because our local receipts came up in high.
But this isn't free cash from any, anything coming from two thousand and eleven, this is excess in two thousand and twelve.
So we're doing it next week.
And, yeah, but you guys have any questions on it, or you guys?
All right.
Move to number five. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrowing transfer available funds in conjunction in the summary of the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding increased costs for the purchase of a new ambulance for the fire department. This was passed in April eleventh, two thousand and eleven town meeting. So the fire department ambulance, they have an opportunity to get one that is of higher quality with more functionality that they need for an additional thirty-five thousand dollars. This item was approved in the capital plan last year, went through the whole process of the capital plan, and the indication is by spending this extra thirty-five thousand dollars on this ambulance, as opposed to one that's thirty-five thousand cheaper, that it will last several years longer. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Any questions?
The only question I had was, maybe this wasn't discussed when Chief Ched was here last time, but I thought we talked about that. I know it's, I thought they were saying that a truck, I'm assuming it's a chassis, because of a larger truck, chassis as opposed to a man.
It's in a low-end chassis.
But, I don't know, maybe, maybe, I probably discussed it last time. It makes sense, because it means it's going to save seven years longer potentially useful by the time it's done. That's why we had a whole discussion.
And you can have them in if you want, on the twenty-seventh.
Your Vermont background's coming out. Jackson.
I'm in favor of a better end of it.
I'll vote for it. Just only raising, because I thought we talked about it.
Are these numbers good, or are they going to change? We don't know what pocket we're going to take it from.
Well, this one is capital, so free cash is no one-time, non-recurring would be my recommendation. And it's forty-five, I believe, Mary, right? Or did I do my math wrong?
I'll have to check, yeah, because you had originally thought we only appropriated one hundred and sixty-five.
No.
Thought we had a hundred and seventy-five.
So it's thirty-five thousand is a good number.
I'll move to approve, accept article five.
Second? My only question is, where do you want to take it?
Pre-cash.
Pre-cash?
Let's have a pre-cash.
Go ahead. Uh, second, we have to do a motion off the office, or what are we doing?
He just said move to support article five.
Just move just four, and I'll give you the final one.
On the table?
And I second. Aye.
Aye. Good question.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Number six, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrowing transfer from available funds and treasury, sum of twenty thousand dollars into the veterans' personnel services for the purpose of fully funding this account for the remainder of two thousand and twelve. As you all know, the state passed a law that towns of our size need a full-time veterans' agent, and these are the funds necessary to pay for that position. We are talking with a couple of the towns, I think it's Hingham and Marshfield-
Yep.
-to do some sort of collaboration, but at this point in time, in order to be legal, we need to get a full-time one for the town of Situate. Is that right?
Yes.
Move to second.
So this would come from raise and appropriations?
Yes, that would be my recommendation. Yep, top, part of the town.
Now, we can change any of these at the next meeting.
You can change them up to the Knight on the floor with the motion. You will, you'll get the motions in October, so it's really, I, I can write the warrant so that it gives you maximum flexibility, but Mary and I need to know the pockets at some point to, to be able to write the information for the, the stuff the advisory committee needs.
Okay, so we all support number six. Number seven, vote to transfer thirty-two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars from the golf course retained earnings to the golf course enterprise fund for the purpose of balancing the estimated revenues for two thousand and twelve. So, it seems like the golf course lost money, and they need to use their retained earnings to make the revenue issue be expensed. So, Mary, I'll leave them on, this is for two thousand and twelve.
Yes.
So you have to estimate it by using two thousand and eleven expenses.
Yeah.
And they exceeded what we had projected for revenue for two thousand and twelve.
They did not take in the revenue they needed taxation for two thousand and eleven.
But that's not what this is.
That is not what this is, but so then what we projected for two thousand and twelve now is not enough.
Now, does this bring the retained earnings to?
Zero.
To zero. And does this make the flush, or both?
It depends on, they need their revenue projection next year, yes, they'll be, they'll be zero.
It'll be a combination of both. It will be reduced expenditures in his budget that's approved now.
Mr. Murray?
I'm just going to ask that, what happens if retained earnings is down to zero?
Yeah, if you end up next, if, if it close at fiscal twelve, if there's a retained earnings deficit, it will have to be raised somehow.
Have to be made up by the town budget.
Or somehow increase the golf revenue.
And that's true for any enterprise fund.
But I understand.
I understand.
That will be paid off by fiscal two thousand and seventeen.
Move article seven.
So this is just in the enterprise fund, this has no cash, it's moving it from retained earnings to the budget. All those supporting?
Aye.
Number eight, to raise the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars for the school department budget for fiscal year two thousand and twelve, and this is enough to reconcile the budget revenues per cent of the beach ticker revolving fund. So we discussed this.
We discussed this with the chairman in the past, and I'd move to support. I second.
And this will come from the-
Free cash.
Free cash.
No, it's the town side's responsibility to make it reconcile, so it'll come from free cash.
Okay.
That's our dime, so we'll do it that way.
I'll second that.
Great, all we all support it?
Yes.
Great, move on.
Aye.
To see if the, to raise four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the water enterprise fund for the purpose of replacing the mains on Surfside Road in conjunction with the Mescuatchip Pond sewer project. So this is, now, correctly if I'm wrong, we're tearing up the road already down there, we've got bad water pipes, and this is an opportunity to save money by doing it all at once.
Yes. And then this gets reimbursed by the veteran? No.
This is not-
This is water.
Mescuatchip Pond only does that portion.
Water.
Water Enterprise will pay for it, but it will be done concurrently with the sewer from Mescuatchip.
Is this on your capital?
If you remember in the past, we would appropriate one point two million dollars a year for water pipe replacement based upon raising the rates by five percent. In the last capital go-around, we did not appropriate one point two five million, we appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, so we cut back on water main replacement. We've been able to find enough water main replacement money to replace the main, mains on Hadley and Gannett, in anticipation that if the water department, in fact, was able to end up well into the black, we could take from earnings the money to pay for the additional pipes. That, that, that strategy has panned out. The water department has come into the black by around a million dollars for fiscal year FY eleven because of reduced expenses and, and better revenues. Result is, we have the money available to then replace these mains, which have broken three times since June.
So are we taking the money from retained earnings?
From, I don't know.
Well, you can either borrow or retain earnings.
I wouldn't borrow, I'd take it. But, but, I'm sorry.
You certify-
We have reserves, we have, we have, you know-
You certify retained earnings of one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand.
Time, timeout. The reason that that's not in your backup material is, I still don't have a definitive number yet. Once I have that number, which is very-
So you'll tell us what you-
-by a hundred thousand twice, then we can decide and recommend. So we'll do a hold.
So conceptually, do we agree to take the money from within the enterprise fund? Do you?
If I may, just one question, a comment I guess, Al. Can we expect, it seems over the past couple of years that every time we've opened up a road, we found bad water pipes. And this is probably not a shock, but is that something that we're going to do? I mean, is that going to continue, do you think?
Yes, I mean, you would think that the minute area, you know, Surfside Road, which seems to be all new homes, would have relatively more recent water pipes. Those pipes were put in in nineteen oh six. So those pipes are well over a hundred years old, so that's why those pipes have failed. What we worked on first is replacing the mains that will improve distribution to all of the neighborhoods, the main, the main mains, if you will, but now we're finding that these subsidiary mains are all being replaced. So I would say you should expect that the town will need to, the water enterprise will need to continually invest in replacing pipes as a program, just as you would maintaining your home a program. Thank you.
And Joe's question is, whenever we do some sort of sewer project, you can probably expect a water project on scale.
And that's how we're trying to project out the water.
Most likely, but it depends on, yeah, it would depend on where the next sewer project is.
Okay, number ten is to see if we'll raise forty thousand dollars to establish a, no, no.
Is that right?
Yep. Yep, the facilities manager, for the purpose of oversight, the management of town properties and the remainder of fiscal two thousand and twelve. So we talked about this at a prior meeting, and we all agree that we need the facilities manager to manage the, how many buildings was it?
Fifty.
Fifty-five buildings, and this is how we're going to fund it. What do you suggest?
My initial thought is raise and appropriate if we have the additional capacity, because, and I just wanted, this is an out-of-cycle a little bit, because I anticipated it in FY thirteen budget, and, and not to disparage Dale Adl, but he was much more efficient than I anticipated he would be, so the ESCO is that much further ahead, and the solar array is that much further ahead than I need a body sooner than later. Otherwise, you would see this at the annual, but I need a body, you know, between town meeting, the end of October, doing a recruitment and a search and getting someone to start, you're looking at January already, and the turbine comes online in January.
Move to support. Second? Yes, I support as well. We can talk about what bucket, whatever it is. You guys?
I'm, yes, I'm pulling, strongly, strongly pulling.
I thought, are we really voting these? Okay. We'll vote them all, I mean, if we all support them, we'll probably just vote them all next week.
Yeah.
Because we haven't really formally done that. Number eleven is the town raising seventy thousand dollars to retrofit the police department for a combined public safety emergency response distracting services. So we need to do construction to the police station so that we can get the fire and the police dispatch under one roof.
That is correct.
Makes sense.
Any questions? And this will probably come from free cash at the one time.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, we all support that. No questions? Article number twelve, a non-financial one, to see if the town will enact legislation allowing the current police chief, Brian Stewart, to remain in said position subject to satisfactory physical exam until reaching the age of sixty-six, notwithstanding any provision, otherwise you're finding him to retire at sixty-five. So state law says that if you're a police chief and you're over sixty-five years old, you have to go to town meeting and get approval to be a police chief when you're sixty-six. And the board unanimously supported him at our last meeting. Any questions? Support it?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Number thirteen, too long to read.
I'm using the cheat sheet, I'm looking at, I think, the advisory, the advisory, just basically establishing a-
Oh, right, right. So when the solar array and the wind turbine come in place, we're going to be getting money from the utilities, and this is going to be the revolving fund that that money will go into, so that we can then allocate the funds whatever we want. Or again, this is just creating a revolving fund. Thank you. Any questions on that? Okay, number fourteen, this is, it's part of, why don't I read this one? This is adopting a new bylaw permitting Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty, section NC, for the purpose of making improvements and accessing betterments to private ways or take other action. So essentially, the state passed a law that we're going to incorporate into our laws that allows people to betterment on a private way and keep them a private way. So the town would be involved in terms of making sure the project is up to qualifications, I think, getting the contracts in place, and getting the work done, and all the payment would come through the betterments of the users on their street, but they would still remain a private way. Is that?
And we would manage this in the same way as we manage the street acceptance process whereby people on a private way would petition to have this take place. There would be some meetings on it, there would be some establishment of understanding what the cost would be for the members of that private way, an agreement by the members of the private way, and then proceed on that basis. So it would parallel the public way process and enable people to remain a private way where if not feasible, that their street could become public, but they want some maintenance done to it.
I think you might have just answered it in the last sentence, but what, my question was going to be, why would a neighborhood spend money to improve their private way, bring it up to standard, and not have it accepted as a public way?
There are many streets in Situate that could not become, would never be able to be paved, for instance. Take Comerock, okay, say the Old Mouth subdivision area. Those people have come, have, we've had extensive discussions with them about if they, if they were to go a public way, what would it mean in terms of how the street is handled, or if they say the private way, what would it mean? And they, they actually have come back and said they prefer that it remain a private way because they have more control over traffic through their neighborhood, et cetera. However, they don't have the means, it's very cumbersome for them to maintain it themselves. They don't have a homeowners association, say, and so what we've extended is the hand saying, okay, we can help you with that. It also is difficult for them to go collect from neighbors to get money to do the grading. So this would be a chance for them to have the town do that at their request and collect the money, and they pay it. Thank you.
It's a service that the town provided to them. We amortize it over X number of years so that they-
Right.
Any questions? All support?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, number fifteen, this one we discussed a couple meetings ago. This is to accept a gift from the North Situate Beach Association for the parcel of land referred to as Minor Beach. We will take on the responsibilities of ownership and maintenance. So this is from the low water to the high water mark on Minor Beach. Now, we were under agreement with them for the last fifty years, under some sort of lease, and now we are going to actually accept it as a gift.
Right, I just got this from Jim Toomey. There are a couple folks here from the North Minor Beach Association who might have questions, but this is what Jim gave me earlier this evening. The eminent domain, I really want to underscore, it's not to ensure that we're going to take it or any way. It would be a friendly taking, but it just covers all aspects in case there isn't clear title. So that's why he included that, so he wanted to make sure I explained that because when folks see the word eminent domain, they sort of panic.
So I'll read it, it says, "The town authorized a board of selectmen to acquire by gift or eminent domain the parcel of land known as Minor Beach shown on blah, 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 or access is not blah, blah, blah."
Mr. Coman, Mr. Chairman, the Minor Beach Association recognized this problem a while ago that the lease was up. They came to us, they did a lot of work, research work, et cetera, in order for this to happen tonight, so I, the town owes them a thank you. First of all, recognize they get the second of the law, they can just skip to the town. Appreciate it.
May I add a comment, sir?
I have to compare what Joe is, it's a treasure to be able to get limited property or land of some cost and realize it's between the high and the low needs, but I mean, that's something that they don't have to do when they own it, and it's an asset to the town, it's an asset to most of our residents, and I can only thank them for doing just that, to manage it.
Okay, everyone support that one?
Absolutely.
Number sixteen is...
Sort of discussed that one already.
Okay, this one we decided to get the town council opinion on, so that'll be scratched. Number seventeen.
It's adoption of a new zoning map. The map that we have right now isn't accurate, and what they're doing is they're saying the map from nineteen seventy-four, which is actually correct, but it hasn't been updated due to the recent zoning changes. So planning board is saying, let's get a new map, starting using the nineteen seventy-four map as the baseline, and then making all the correct revisions on the new map, so that's the way it is.
So it's actually accepting the new map.
Correct.
Any questions? Anyone support?
Yes.
Number eighteen, this is for the town to amend the zoning bylaw by adding the foreign language. And this is one that we tried to pass at the annual town meeting, but the Attorney General's office kicked it back and said the wording was wrong, so we're going to try it again. It will say, "Signs for candidates who win state all primary elections, the all-state, may remain up until three days after the full general election or take any other action relative thereto." So this is their language, and this is what will make that bylaw work. Any questions? Anyone support?
Fine with me, that wording looks really weird, the word "all" is.
I think it's supposed to be...
Someone just double-checked that before we get to town meeting because we don't want to have the Attorney General kick that back again.
This is supposed to be on the other side of...
Yeah, it is the all-state.
Yeah, but you never know. Someone check that. Someone far smarter than me.
Number eighteen, quick. Okay, number nineteen, so number nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one are the official acceptances of Persimmon Drive, Hickory Lane, and Beach Tree Farm Road.
Sound good.
No questions, all support. Number twenty-two and number twenty-three, so these are two others that we're taking into consideration. The first one is number twenty-two, and this is for the purchase of a special ed van for the school department in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars. I spoke with Bill Johnson, Paul Donovan, and Dottie Cook today about this van. The, I'll save my two cents and you guys can shoot it in. For capital projects, we've set up an intense and very comprehensive plan that all capital projects need to go through so that they are looked at properly, you know, amortized properly, and really looked at in terms of the big picture. So in most cases, I'll even say in all cases, or in most cases, we're not going to allow capital projects to be passed at special town meetings if they did not go through this course of action. Although after speaking to the three people that I just mentioned, and I see Mike Hayes out there nodding his head, this is somewhat of an emergency situation. One of the vans that they had did not pass extension and had a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it, and now we are using other vans with a lot of miles to do work, and we don't have a backup van. So it's my belief and Sean's belief that this is one of those situations where we need to get this funded as quickly as possible. And what I would like to suggest that we do is that we take this fund, we won't put it through this process and we won't put it on the warrant, but what this type of thing is, is this is an emergency situation, and this is exactly what the reserve fund is there for. And there is ninety thousand dollars in the reserve fund, and what I would recommend, and try and get the support from all of you, is that we suggest that this money come from the reserve fund, it could be available right away, and it would be really the proper basket of where things should come from of this nature.
So you're saying, Mr. Chair, it does not need to go for the special town meeting as an article? It's going to come from the reserve fund?
Not if we vote to approve it, and then the advisory board votes to approve it, then it doesn't. If either of those don't pass, then we would reconsider whether it would go on the warrant.
So are we going to make a motion on this now, as a reserve fund?
Yes.
I would move that...
And when will advisory board?
Tomorrow night.
Okay.
So we'd have to go perform...
And so if advisory board says no, we still have time to come back?
That would be for the board to discuss on the twenty-seventh before you finalize the warrant. But we've really, I think, streamlined the process for which the reserve fund is used for. You had a departmental turnback of fifty-one thousand in the reserve fund last year. This is my understanding, it's completely unforeseen an emergency. So you can vote, I think it's twenty-eight thousand, Mike? Tonight, and then I can bring it before advisory tomorrow night. And if they approve it, it's good to go and can be purchased immediately instead of after October twenty-fifth. And then if not, you'll just, you'll put it on the warrant, I assume, if that's your pleasure, or reconsider. But I think in terms of the financial bucket, that's the appropriate way to do. And then if the reserve fund has an issue before June thirtieth, we'll have a special before the annual in April anyway. But given that we turned back fifty-something thousand last year, I'm comfortable with it.
Mr. Harris? I was just going to say, Tom, you said quite well, but just that Dottie Cook is here. If anyone else has any questions, she's in the back of the room. I had a quick conversation with her this afternoon. Feel the same way you do.
I don't think I've seen Dottie at any meetings here, so when she says that something's an emergency, she's usually right on. Mr. Hayes?
I was going to add, and we appreciate the fact that she did it, but, and the vans and buses that residents have on that night, this is an emergency. Just one van, when we were going through last year's gathering plan, we honestly felt we just need one when we're out of it, but it's literally a rough bucket, and we're not...
I am all in favor of this. As a reserve fund acquisition, I just want to make sure that, and I'm not questioning all the legitimacy whatsoever, particularly Dottie, you're here. Mike, you just said, no doubt about that. I just want to make sure that the word goes out clearly that, at least I'm not going to really want to hear about a lot of emergencies coming up from other people. And this is not a loophole that other people, I think, could exploit, try and use to get access to some reserve fund money or something. This is a legitimate emergency. I'm greatly impressed with the diligence of the capital planning process that's been brought in the last year or two, and I really want to stick to that wherever possible. And so I'm going along with this in full support because it is truly an emergency for what this is intended, but let's not set a precedent.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So, do you want to do it? So this is just a motion that I'm making right now, so I'd say move to support transfer from the reserve fund twenty-eight thousand dollars for the special use purchasing a van, special education van for the school department.
Second?
Second by Mr. Murray. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mike, you'll come back to us if, for some reason, it doesn't pass?
Yeah.
Last one that we're discussing tonight is the appropriation from CPC to complete the Granite Path Extension. Has anyone heard from CPC? The last, you know, this may be something that we have to postpone for next week. The last email that I got on, there was some question as to whether they... Is anyone from CPC here? You're not on any more panel?
I'm not staying in the, but I go to the meeting.
I would suggest maybe next week, but I talked to John Bowman on Sunday. I understand that they supported it, so if you want.
I saw John on Friday, and he said he had voted to support it, not necessarily the quantity, but the concept.
Exactly, that's what needs to get ironed out. I would, before voting this on Tuesday, I would want dollar value in the concept, at least in the email from Bowman communicating the CPC.
Put a hole on it because they don't have the...
One second, chairs?
Yeah, no, I agree with Holden. This, just so we all know, it's for the construction from Hollitt Street down to Havill.
Yeah. So what happened was, it was appropriated, we appropriated, I think, three hundred thousand dollars to get us from Hollitt all the way down to Havill, and now the FID came in at a higher than a hundred and... I thought it was only seventy thousand, but somewhere around a hundred or a hundred plus to get it there because of cost of goods or whatever. They do have some money left over from a prior project that they did under budget, but there's still a deficit of somewhere between fifteen and a hundred thousand dollars, and that's what they are coming to get it for. So the project has already been passed for a certain amount of money, but the construction of it has exceeded that number.
Yes, the phase one and two has a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars left over because that phase appropriated more money than was needed to do it. The second phase, they granted less money than was required to do it under advice from the people who asked me what the project would cost. The project cannot be done for the three hundred thousand dollars that was appropriated. It's going to require something, something higher. CPC has considered taking money and going higher. One concern is that money may not even then be enough to complete the project, and the DPW would not undertake a project and begin the work unless we have sufficient reserves to do the work. So I think it kind of determines whether or not the project goes forward. We will not do a project that doesn't get sufficient construction oversight, for instance. And that's the concern.
And there was an email from DPW that gave the number that they thought it would be with overhead run. So that's the number that you feel comfortable in. All right, so let's hold this one. I'll talk to John, and we'll try and get him and probably Barbara Lydon for the next meeting. And I have another one. The last one, wait, it's probably from the previous camp. Trish, I'm going to let you with one more.
Sure. Usually when the Department of Public Works is doing a road project or sewer project or water project, it gets easements at town meeting to do what's necessary to complete the work. As you know, we've been going gangbusters on seawalls and repair, and we have a seawall plan, and we thought we could just get those easements on properties by talking to the owner informally as each project went forward. That's not the case. We need to do the exact same process as we do for water and sewer. So this is a warrant article that town council gave me this evening to get easements for seawalls for access, and you can read the language. So I'd ask that this be added to the warrant for your consideration as well.
Support. It reads, "To see if the town will authorize a board of selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain or otherwise easements for the purpose of accessing, constructing, reconstructing, replacing, and maintaining seawalls along the town shoreline or take other action relative thereto." So we passed a lot of money on an override to help start repairing our seawalls, and until we get this done, we can't do it.
Well, we actually had an issue with seawall bid breach. We don't have access to fix that now.
Mr. Harris? Well, I just, so I thought this would give us access, whether the homeowner agrees or not, to get around the other side. Is that what this is, to make those repairs?
That's so, if we need to get there, we can, and we can either take it or whatever. But as we're doing more in our seawall repair and whatever, we have to make sure we have access, and we're finding with the repairs we just made, that is sometimes prohibitive.
So would this be a bylaw?
Nope, it's just to giving you the ability of the board to get those easements.
It's just easements, it's not the land. It's just easements, it's just access to get the cranes in and do whatever we need to do.
So those are all the ones that we have now. It looks like we supported all of them unanimously. What we'll do over the next week is finalize the numbers and finalize the buckets that we think we're going to take them from, and obviously, we can add any other ones that we've come across our, you know, that we're considering now. So as of the end of this meeting, we'll close the warrant, and then we'll discuss it again, probably open the warrant and close it again next Tuesday night. And on that night, we'll vote them all specifically, is that?
Well, you've closed the warrant, so anything that goes on the warrant is what you vote next week.
At the end of this meeting tonight.
Yes, so there's no new articles.
Okay, could there be a new article? Will we open the warrant again?
If you put it on the agenda for the twenty-seventh, yes. But the board can, you as the board, it's your warrant, you can do whatever you want. Mostly, you're opening and closing the warrant for outside departments and outside parties.
Right.
So if you suddenly have to add a warrant next week...
Or change a wording or something.
That is totally within your purview because you're the statutory owner of the warrant.
Bless you. Any other questions on the warrant? Thank you for all the work and the backup, everybody. Why don't we move on to item number fourteen, which is the authorization to execute school project funding agreements? So it's my understanding that we did this last year and authorized the chairman of the board to slightly assign changes to these projects, but for some sort of technicality, we have to vote it again. This year, do you authorize?
Because you're not John.
Right. I'm not in motion.
Move the board of selectmen vote to authorize the chairman of the board of selectmen to execute amendments to the project funding agreement for the Lompoc Elementary School project.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It's unanimous. Great, fourteen, we did fifteen. We can do the appointments, number sixteen?
Or move to appoint Shirley Musto to the beautification committee.
Second?
Second by Mr. Murray. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It's unanimous. Motion?
Move to appoint Michael Cheverie as a constable.
Second. Second by Mr. Murray. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Move on to number seventeen, the town administrator's report.
Just a few quick things and one new item. The first one is fairly straightforward. It's to vote an easement for National Grid to place some polls on one sixty-one stripway. The motion's there for you.
Motion?
Move the board of selectmen approve the agreement presented by National Grid in granting of an easement, replacement of poles on town property.
Second?
Second by Mr. Murray. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Just a question, and this might go to the coal power plant. Are we waiting for them to do polls? Hold the polls on coal power plant for that lock plate?
Within two weeks.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Can we make that, amend that motion to make a contingent on them moving those polls?
No.
No, I mean...
It's not, excuse, I apologize.
Mr. Bangit?
Kevin and I had a series of exchanges about the delay in that work, and when I asked him who I could talk to at National Grid, suddenly, he was told that it would be done within two weeks. Now, Mr. Bangit might want to add something to that.
Yeah, I mean, you're exactly what you're, this is totally related to the turbine project.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's fine. No, I don't want to raise anything.
We need to be pressuring them to get these things on, otherwise, that project goes back, gets slowed down, so.
I know, because we'd be doing them a favor to delay further when we want the turbine up and going, so.
Yeah, we're not doing them a favor.
You obviously see where I'm going with this. On the one hand, they're delaying us on one thing, and here, we're saying yes on something. Anytime we have leverage over this heavily company, I'd like to take it. This is not the appropriate time, I understand and respect.
Well, actually, Rick, that's a nice segue because that's the next item on the report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? It's unanimous.
There's your segue now.
So the next item in the report, I know you talked about this at length at the last meeting. I was in the audience and not at the table, so I didn't really get a chance to talk, and I don't want to belabor the discussions, although there continues to be, I think, some discussion among communities about the value of having an electrical, a local electoral-like company versus National Grid. I actually received an email from a resident about that. But, you know, I just, there's a couple people that I think really needed to be additionally thanked. And Tony, I think you mentioned it, Sheila and Chris of my office just answered dozens and dozens of phone calls and I think did a terrific job. And Chief Stewart, who was acting in my stead while I was gone, did a great job. And Jim Cantwell continues to be fabulous in terms of advocating for the town. But I also want to thank Tony because Tony did a lot of over, above, and beyond stuff during the storm, writing the web blast and trying to get information out and helping arrange for stuff at the school. And I don't know if the other board members are aware of that, but just my personal thanks because I wasn't here, he was dealing with the media too, and so I just, I want to publicly thank you for that because it was great. And we talked too, but it was good. So, but there's a couple of things I want to talk about. I mentioned the report, and I want to discuss at some point later because every time the town has a weather event, and we've had many, many over the last few decades, it's really a report card on, you know, how well we are prepared for emergencies. And I think we need to explore doing some things a little differently in terms of an emergency operations center, which we do not have, which raises the bigger issue of really the functionality and use of all our public buildings, and what are the twenty-first century needs for buildings that are now sixty, seventy years old. And so with the central dispatching, I think there's an opportunity to talk about those kinds of things for having an emergency operations center, and I will be broaching that with Chief Judge. The other issue in terms of National Grid, I think that's a longer term. The other issue in terms of National Grid, I think that's a longer-term issue. I think we'll look to the Attorney General to see how that happens. I'm really not inclined at this point to be paying our electricity bills, and certainly not those for the period that the town did not have electricity for six days. I'm gratified by the fact that with the turbine and the solar array, we will be reducing our reliance on this bureaucracy. But again, I just, I want to thank the staff for really responding, 'cause it's really when we matter most. We're public servants, and when people need us, we're there to do that. And I just wanna acknowledge folks. And so the second part of my report talks a little bit about National Grid, so I don't need to go there. I do want to share with you, there were several things that came to my attention in speaking with Chief Judge and Chief Stewart about restoration, some of the restoration activities taken by National Grid from a safety aspect. And those are the ones that are of particular concern with me, when they restored wires and what they're obligated to do before they re-energize, re-energize a wiring. So some of those have come to my attention, and I'll be sure to convey those to Attorney General of the Department of Public Utilities. As Tony mentioned in the warrant article, we are exploring the potential to establish a regional veterans district. We've had conversations with the town of Marshfield and the town of Hickam to share services. I think that's a win-win for both communities, as regionalization is really something that I think we can look to do more of, and this certainly lends itself to that. So keep the board posted on those discussions.
Question?
And the last thing that's not in my report is something to muddle on, is the wind turbine is going to be up in January, the road is being constructed now, and it needs to have a logo. So Al and I have had some email exchanges about what that should say. And I can either share you what Al has suggested and what I have suggested, and then said, let's ask the board. So the turbine, as you know, is over four hundred feet, it's going to be very tall, and it's going to be a landmark in the harbor. So I don't know if you want a preliminary suggestion, anything it should say. Al had said Town of Situate or Situate Wind. I had suggested just simply Situate. But I didn't know if you had any input or, do we have to have something on it?
Is it going on?
No. If we don't, actually, we don't own, actually, we don't own it, so it's, it's the owner's choice what to put on it. They graciously asked us if we would like to have our name put on it. Or the name of the company is Situate Wind. The name of the solar company, by the way, is called Situate Solar, kind of nicely use those, that commonality, they call it Situate, the company's called Situate Wind. We could call, we could put on it just the word Situate, we could put on it the word Town of Situate, we could put on it, you know, whatever you want. Probably something simple is better.
Where's it going on?
The way it's wired, treat it.
No, it goes on the, on the generator part, which is something about the size of a Greyhound bus stacked on top of it.
Why don't you just do a Situate Euro, you know, the S I C, like the Euro, the white ones, you just have that little Euro, and you put S I C.
Why don't we sell the naming rights?
And you can sell Euros, you know.
Yeah, we can raise, you can add a concrete pipe on it.
Sean, any ideas if we were to sell the naming rights to somebody?
How about Sean, S A G?
S A G.
Well, we don't own it, so I don't think we can sell the naming rights, seriously.
I would, my vote on this would be, in recognition that logos and mission statements are the death of many organizations, I would, I'd just be in favor of attractively haunt the word Situate.
Sean? I just have a question, Al, any idea how they're gonna get the blades to the site?
On very, very long trucks.
No, I know, are they gonna do by water or by?
Well, it will not come through Situate Harbor, it will have to come by mass highway roads, which is not happy with. It can't come through the harbor because our pier is not strong enough to support the crane necessary to pick these heavy items off the barges, which they could bring in. So they looked at that, but they haven't decided for sure yet, but they hired a logistics company to lay out a route. If you think about it, these things are put in very odd places as well, the top of hills and mountains, so there's a logistics expert on how to do that, I, they haven't yet.
How long's the blade, one blade? Just kind of like a whole store.
A blade is, I think it's eighty meters long, that's two-hundred and forty feet.
It will not go around the harbor.
It'll go straight across, it's gonna go straight across.
Build a temporary road if this can.
Yeah, they most likely have to build a ramp up over the road.
That's just gonna be a neat thing to say, I heard they're gonna do it.
It will be. In fact, they do, they do a bribe run of delivery of a blade with a fake blade to, in advance, to determine where there might be some things they can't engineer and anticipate.
Just one, just one thing that goes along with that, which I hadn't on a visit, but coincides here, is if you're gonna be throwing brush away for the next.
October first through mid-February.
October first through mid-February, it's no longer going to be at the current brush spot, 'cause that's gonna be under construction with a road made for this. So it's going to be back at the transfer station, there'll be areas marked out, delineated out, have you decided where it's going yet, Al?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be a sign that tells you where to go. It will be starting next weekend or this weekend?
Starting next Friday.
Starting next Friday, so this weekend, go to the current place, after that, go to the transfer station. Okay, that's the administrator's report, move on to other business. Sean?
Nope.
Joe?
No.
Yeah, I got a couple. Just two, we got a letter from John Murphy, the Waterways Commission Chairman, and just wanna bring it to your attention, because it talks about, they're either gonna be coming before us, they're either gonna be coming before us, or something about a slight change in the regulations on the mooring waiting list to make it a little more accessible for people who might miss some of the updated timings. And turns out that basically in 2010, there was some confusion on the dates as to when people could get on the mooring list or off the mooring list. So what we're building in, or what they're building in, is a, essentially, an appeal period if you don't do your re-up. Where before, there wasn't a very clearly demarcated appeal period. If you missed your re-up time to keep your name on the list, you were taken off the list. So there's a long discussion about how to still make it very clear, so that if you're on the list, you stay on the list, if you just have a human error and not re-up, you're still able to get back on there. So they're gonna come before us at some point to talk about that. And it's a good thing, and I applaud the Waterways Commission for working on that. And then the other thing is.
Probably no need from the Cubby Forest now.
Yeah, well, no, that's right. Yeah, then the, but then the other thing that came up at our last meeting, which a number of us have been pushing, you know, for a while, is, you know, continued work on the town pier and continued ways to make things more, again, accessible for commercial fishermen and how to use their moorings. There's some discussions going on at the Waterways about how to do, do everything we can to facilitate the commercial industry, people both on moorings primarily, but also like the pier itself. So these are a couple of things Waterways is working on, commercial fishing, and then overall moorings.
Just briefly, you know, I know we voted Shirley Musto on the beautification committee. I was driving down, I think it's Kerry Litchfield to Hook Street, and you see these islands, and if you look at the bottom of Jericho and, not Jericho, I was gonna say, it's called Little Street, it's not, Beaver Dam, Beaver Dam and also Fine Street. You see what people have done as a part of the beautification committee with the islands, they do a wonderful job. It's not mentioned enough a lot, but I mean, everybody sees it, and at this time of the year, it's beautiful, and we'll cut it back again, and we'll start again in the spring. But I just, again, I wanna just say, you know, thank you to those people, they do great, it's unsung, you know, people don't know who they are, but they do a wonderful job, I again, wanna thank them.
Couple of quick things. One thing, actually, I see the press is still here, I think, Jess's?
Jess's.
I mean, Kevin. This Friday, the harbor merchants are having a harbor shopping night, where a certain percentage of their sales of quite a few stores down in the harbor are giving, I don't know the percentage, I'm guessing ten percent, maybe more, of their sales to the school department and to the schools, all six schools in the town. So we'd like to promote that you go out, if you've got some shopping to do, early Christmas shopping, birthday shopping, or whatever, go down and do it that night, and you'll be helping the town and helping the school department. So again, that is harbor shopping on Friday night. I mentioned the brush. The other thing, and John was with me here, and he was kind to let me talk about it, is on September eleventh, the Situate Cohasset football program had a nine-eleven event. And it was, it was unbelievable. I mean, it was, it really made me proud to wanna live in this town, that a small town like this pulled together and did such a great celebration, actually, probably not celebration, but recognition of nine-eleven. The board of PSICO, Robin Sullivan, really put together a wonderful event, it was a great turnout, it was before the football games in the afternoon, and many, many people showed up that weren't involved in the football games. The day was beautiful, Phil Mahoney was there, and he was speaking, the fire, the police, Joe Malone was there and gave a great speech, John gave a nice speech, and Nolan Donato sang, someone from the high school sang. And it was really just a small town, wonderful event. And I really wanna thank the people for putting that together, and I know everyone that went was really impressed. They unveiled the huge Litchfield flag out on the field, and were pictures in the mariner of that, it was really just a great event. One thing that they did give us a little surprise is they, they gave the town of Situate a pear tree. There was a tree that survived the nine-eleven bombings, and it was a pear tree, and in symbolization of that, they gave the town a tree. And John and I accepted it and told them that we find an appropriate place for it to go, so we'll delegate that to somebody. But it was just a great event for a small town, great turnout, great day, and like I said, I was really proud of the board and general.
The other person I was gonna also mention was Ted Holland. If people heard Sunday morning, Boston's bells were ringing at night thirty or night fifteen, it was Mr. Holland who was actually playing different songs, so it was a very nice touch. And Tony gave an excellent speech too, so I just wanted to also acknowledge that, as well.
So that's all I have, any other?
Tony, I just have one thing, since we're here at the Situate Harbor Community Building, a little commercial. The town acquired this building for one-point-eight-seven-five million dollars in May of two thousand and ten. We have been cleaning it out and refurbishing it since then, and I really wanna take a minute to thank Al and his staff, 'cause it took a tremendous amount of work to make this building inhabitable, about fifty thousand dollars worth of money. But the roof is not leaking, the air conditioning is working, it's HP accessible, it's been repainted. And then the plug is that it's available for your personal enjoyment and can be rented, and everything you need to know is on the town's website with a downloadable building reservation form. And we have extensive meeting space here, which I know is at a premium. We've already had a lot of meetings here, I just got an email from the deputy superintendent today to have a meeting here. So I encourage people, since, as Tony mentioned, we're gonna be talking a lot about the future use of this building, to try and come see it. Because I think when folks have in their mind a vision of it as a restaurant, they'll be very, very surprised when they come in and see really what a large facility is, so I just wanna throw that out.
To piggyback on that, the committee has put together their first report to us, we've got it, and we'll be addressing it in the very near future. Our focus right now has really been on getting the warrant completed, and then, as Tricia mentioned also, we will be getting together and getting feedback from the storm as well shortly after the town meeting. Great, were there any correspondences, I don't think so? Minutes, acceptance of the minutes?
Move the board of selectmen vote to accept the meeting minutes of May twenty-fifth, September seventh, and December twenty-first, all of two thousand and ten, and August third, twenty-third, two thousand and eleven.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Staying from the ones I wasn't present to, as does John and Joe.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move into executive session now, so we'll be turning off the phone and asking you to leave, and thank you for coming.